You have one of these, Mr. Smith?
I thought I had the new one in my pocket. Seth, is this yours tonight?
Do you have one? With the chair.
Well, seven o'clock, like call a meeting to order. First thing is a stand for Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, united in every single liberty and justice of all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, first thing on the agenda. We usually approve the agenda, don't we?
Yeah.
Addition, correction. Oh, there we go, yep. Tell me, want to make a motion to approve agenda additions, correction, or additions?
I'll have some stuff later.
I have something, uh. Guess under new, I don't know, new business, or we need to discuss. Compost site out here. Do we want to put that down here and D is write a letter, have the city write a letter? To the compost, to Blue Ridge County?
Yeah, we need to talk about it all full circle, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's full circle now is what it's called.
Well, whatever.
Yeah.
Not our compost site.
No, not ours.
Not only this one on the country.
On the country.
When you smelled out here at the last council meeting, when you walked out the door.
And then I got a request under new business, some money for flowers on Main Street if we put that under new business. Anybody else with anything? If not, so may make a motion to approve the agenda then, but those additions. Someone, the second? Okay, all in favor, say aye, aye, both, motion carried. Um. I guess we have Greg Burkhardt here and he's the first one and we'll let you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got some handouts for everybody.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so as the mayor mentioned, I am Greg Burkhardt. I represent the firm that performed the financial audit for the city's records for 2022. And I'm going to walk you guys through the results of the audit. Right, so I know there's a community basis here. I just want to let you know that I, my intent for this presentation is to keep things informed. So as I go through some of the information. If I pass over something a little bit too fast that you want to discuss, please just stop me and I'm happy to stop and discuss it at. Whatever length you guys feel is necessary, if I don't touch on an area that is of importance to you, that you want to. Get my thoughts or consideration on, you can certainly wait till the end of the presentation. Play it to that. All right, so what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to talk through, talk you guys through the audit process. I'm sure a lot of you here that the auditors are coming to City Hall. We spent a couple of days out here, but it may not be terribly clear what we do. And why we do it, so hopefully after tonight's presentation, you'll have a little bit better understanding of what an audit is. Who holds which responsibilities, we'll talk about the city's responsibilities related to financial reporting. Your audit firm, the responsibilities, we'll touch on some results. Any findings that were present during the audit, then we'll finalize this presentation with just a brief overview of the financial condition of the city. Okay, so with that, let's get started on the first page. Slide number two. What you see here on slide number two describes management's responsibilities over financial reporting. All right, so management is asking as a clerk treasurer, it does include, to a lesser degree, the city council, due to the size of your office staff and the size of the city. Plays some small role in management, so the two primary responsibilities that management holds related to the audit. Are first and foremost for those basic financial statements. All right, so the city is responsible to make all the accounting decisions. Of course, you guys do look to your audit firm to provide guidance on accounting standards, especially new ones that are implemented, but that responsibility lies solely with the city. The second primary responsibility relates to maintenance of internal controls. You guys have heard me talk about internal controls before, but for those of you that aren't familiar with it, your internal controls are just simply your policies and procedures. That the city has in place that will protect your assets. All right, so whether that be your cash in the bank, your investments, your vehicles, equipment, infrastructure. There needs to be appropriate policies in place to protect those assets. As well as identify and correct any errors that may be present in your financial records. Okay, excuse me. Moving over to page two, slide number three. This slide here describes the auditor's responsibilities. Right, my responsibilities are really simple. And they revolve around the different reports that we provide over this financial audit, so we start on the left-hand side there on slide three, it states that we provide a financial opinion. And we conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted, accepted auditing standards. All right, so those auditing standards require that we obtain what we call sufficient and appropriate audit evidence. All right, so what does that mean? Well, that means that if I were to tell the city council at the end of last year. We had approximately $1.6 million of cash and investments, I can prove that. I can prove that because I have audited evidence, all right, so all the numbers that you folks see in your financial report are backed by that same evidence. It is something that you can rely upon. All right, that middle section on slide three describes our report over your internal controls. So we take a look at those policies and procedures and we try to determine are they appropriate based on the facts and circumstances that the city finds itself in during the year. If we find an area where there aren't the appropriate controls in place. Or some of those controls are not operating the way that we anticipate they operate or ought to. We provide a report on what we found. And then finally, on the right-hand side there, we provide a report over Minnesota legal compliance. So the state auditor has, requires that every local government in the state of Minnesota be evaluated against seven broad categories of compliance. And it runs the gambit of just what everything you can conceive of out there, and we actually spend an awful lot of time during the conduct of our audit. Reviewing checklists and ensuring that if the city were. Were to find themselves in an instance of non-compliance, we would locate it and be able to report on what we have found. Okay, bottom of page number two, slide four. Will briefly describe the results of the audit. Okay, so that's how section on slide number four, under financial opinion. You can see that first bullet there states that the city has received a qualified opinion on your governmental activities. And then in parentheses, Gatsby sixty-eight. So what's going on there, and this has been present for the last, last handful of years. This relates to the fire relief association's pension plan. For those that recall from last year, the city is required to incorporate the fire relief pension plan on your records. Due to the close association that you have with that fire relief, but more so because you are responsible for any shortfalls that may become present in that pension plan. All right, so the city years ago made a decision that you did not want to implement. Gatsby sixty-eight and bringing that pension plan into your financial records, simply for cost considerations. And I certainly support that, now it doesn't, certainly doesn't indicate that the fire relief plan is not well managed and well positioned. Just basically says that you aren't measuring up to what the accounting standards require. All right, the important thing to know here is that next bullet below, under financial opinion, it states you received a unmodified. Or your clean audit report on everything else, all right, so. Everything other than not having that fire relief pension plan included in your financial report. The numbers that you find in your financial statements do barely present the results of the transactions that happened during twenty-two. That's exactly what you guys want to hear. The middle section on slide four describes our report on internal controls and some of the findings that we have. Audit standards requires to separate those into two broad categories, material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. Essentially, we, it's a hierarchy for what type of an effect could it potentially have on your finances. Material weaknesses being the most severe. And as you can see, we do have one item listed there that we describe as adjusting journal entries. All right, so there were a number of journal entries that were required to ensure that your financial statements comply with all the accounting rules. And a handful of those journal entries were of a magnitude or a dollar amount that exceeded a threshold that we put in place each year for our audit. And because of that, had we not made those journal entries, your financial statements would not have barely stated what went on last year. Okay, our recommendation related to those journal entries are simply just to review what we have done. Attempt to learn and understand the purpose for each of those entries, especially the material audit adjustments such that. Hopefully in the future, the city may be able to make those adjustments on their own. Okay, the second category of lesser significance. Or less severe than a material weakness is what we classify as significant deficiencies. All right, these are not as severe, like I already mentioned, doesn't necessarily mean that something went wrong. It, what it's, what it's trying to communicate to you all is that there are some limitations to the system of internal control that you have. And because of that, there is a risk present with your financial statements, all right, you can see two listed there. Or rather, the first two lists there are those that we've seen in the past. They predated my exposure with the city and I have a feeling they're going to be here long after every one of us has gone after better, bigger, better things. It doesn't mean that they're not important, however, they still warrant attention from governance and at least an understanding of what's going on there, so we have two listed. Auditor-prepared financial statements and limited segregation of duties. Essentially, those two are, are present because of the size of your office staff. And the size of the city, these are two findings that we find pretty much across the board as we go out and present our results to different cities in, in southern Minnesota. Very little that the city is going to be able to do to eliminate those. Other than hiring additional staff to separate out some of these important accounting responsibilities, all right. However, you can mitigate some of the risk involved there by performing some certain actions and, and activities, first and foremost. Just be aware. Be aware that you have these findings and that it could potentially compensate for a problem with your financial records. And we ask that the city council maintain their active involvement in the financial condition of the city. All right, so ask your questions, if you see something come across your desk or the table there that doesn't fit your expectations, ask questions. Review your budget and actual statements so that if something were to go wrong, if there were an error in your financial reports. You would have a better opportunity to find that, correct it before it comes over to your audit firm. Okay, the last one you see listed under significant deficiencies relates to payroll processing. This is something that the city has struggled with over the last few years. And what we, what we mean when we say payroll processing, there were some issues related to payroll, once again this year. I've got a little bit more details later on in my presentation that will more fully describe what we located. But it has to do with promptly paying, making payroll deposits. Accurately reporting activity to either the IRS or the state of Minnesota. All right, and this is one where it's, it's something that could be easily fixed with some different processes, with some different procedures in place. That those actions are performed back. Okay, and like I said, we'll talk a little bit, a little bit greater detail here just a moment, and then finally, at the bottom of slide four. Under Minnesota statutes, legal compliance findings, so this year, we noted a handful of compliance findings. The first element you see listed there is under the category of miscellaneous provisions, this is kind of a catch-all. That the state auditor has, and there's a number of different things placed in there, and actually, we had two findings. In, inside that one category. The first one relates to a fire state aid payment. That was not remitted to the Fire Relief Association within the timeframe specified by Minnesota statutes. The law says you have to remit that over within thirty days, we found that to be almost five months. After it was received by the city. The other one that we noted under miscellaneous provisions related to some donations that were accepted by the city. Those donations are required to be accepted and approved via a resolution passed by a three-fourth majority of the governing board, the city council.
Would they be, the biggest thing would be contributions from the fire department that the city would have to accept, right?
I don't have exactly which donation that was, but all donations from any source. Must be accepted by resolution and then of course passed by a three-fourth majority of them. And then finally, under claims and disbursements, state statute requires all expenditures. To be paid, or all, rather, all invoices received by the city to be paid within thirty-five days for councils that meet monthly. And. We noted at least one, I believe there were a handful of payments that were not made within that statutory timeframe. What have you of them related to payroll and payroll tax deposits?
Going back up to the top there, when you were talking about the firemen's relief, you know, they've done a really good job keeping up. With, with that, within their department. Would we ever set up a line item in our budget? So we had a little slush fund and say, say, say times got bad. And, and something happened, or do you just take that money out of the general and? Make it, make it right?
Well, yes and no, you know, I guess it really depends, we do that, I have some cities that I work with that will. That will create a line and a budget with the expectation that the fire relief's investment plans are having a more difficult time. Some will actually go as far as creating a levy line. And will have a levy that they're going to use to support that fire relief pension plan. It's entirely up to the city, but what you don't have any control over is if that plan were to, we're not going to meet their. The promises that they've made to pay pension benefits, the state will require what we call a. Required contribution is essentially what it is, so the fire relief will provide reports to the city or they ought to in August. And there may be a requirement there to make up any deficits in their funding as far as any pension payouts that they've had.
So say if six people retired and brought on that. Could it ever get to the point where there wouldn't be enough money to fund it and that's when the city would have to kick in?
Possibly, it's more of a forward-looking analysis where they're saying, okay, where are your active members? Where are their terms of services and what do we expect that those payments are going to be? Are your investments going to satisfy those eventual payouts? You know, having six firemen retire in one year isn't great with that investment plan, but those retired firemen bring their liabilities with them. So you remove cash from your investment plan, but you also remove that potential future liability as well, so it's almost a one-for-one change in that. Where you're going to run into problems and this very well could be the case here coming forward is. As you guys are probably aware, the stock market has had some challenges, bond funds are not doing well and. And there really is no good place to put money anymore, so we're seeing a lot more required contributions. Being necessitated because of the, just the down market that's been going on.
What would you suggest for a town this size to do? Do we have a line item or?
I would pay it as it comes to.
All right.
Yeah, you know, there's no, like I said, I know you guys do make a discretionary contribution over there. From time to time to their investment plan, but I would pay it as it comes to. And that's probably the best way to do it. Good question here, all right, so moving along over to slide number five, top of pages three and actually slide five and six. I don't want to spend an awful lot of time in any one of these particular areas because. This information that we, we're going to see here on these next few slides are more fully developed in a report that I provided to Anthony, hope you guys get a chance to take a look at that. We describe it as a management report. It addresses some of these items in better detail than what I can do here in an open meeting, but I do however want to point out. Just one, one element here, top of page, or top of slide number five on page three, under auditor assurance. I'm not going to read that statement back to you all, but what this does is it, it describes what an audit is able to do. And what limitations an audit has. So it states that we provide reasonable, but not absolute assurance, and that's a very important nuance to consider. We come in here and do an audit, we follow the professional standards, we do a, or at least I feel like we're doing a very effective and efficient audit. However, we don't look at every check. We do not look at every deposit, you don't have time to do those sorts of things and you guys certainly wouldn't want to pay us to do that. So we follow our standards, but reasonable is not absolute. So the takeaway message there is that there are no guarantees, even though you, you heard your auditors say, hey, those financial statements are in good shape, you got a clean unmodified report other than the pension plan. That doesn't alleviate management's responsibility to continue to oversee those. The general ledger doesn't alleviate the council's responsibility to oversee the financial affairs of the city. Okay, slide number six. Describes some of the changes that we made to your records as you keep them during the year versus how you'll find them in those financials reports. This year, we posted thirty-seven journal entries, which is. In the wheelhouse of what we would normally see, maybe a, a bit more, but nothing. Exceeding our expectations, there were a handful of what we call audit adjustments, or matter of fact, there were fourteen. And those are correction of errors, things that we found that needed to be put in a different place or reported altogether. Six of those audit adjustments or corrections are what we would consider material, again, the dollar ounce involved exceeded the threshold that we place each year for the audit.
What, what's your threshold for that?
I can't tell you that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a proprietary sort of thing, but it's based on the size of your activities, based on the size of your. Balances, your budgets, things of that nature, and we place that dollar amount. It helps us plan our testing and it also tells us if we don't make this adjustment. We cannot tell you that your financial statements are, are, are barely present.
When you're given this, is this for the whole year of twenty-twenty-two? Or is this, this the last half of the year, because you do it twice a year, so these thirty-seven, is that the last six months or is that the whole business year of two thousand?
It's predominantly the last six months. There are a number of adjustments that, that you can only be annually, so coming in and you guys have asked my firm to prepare a compilation and do some, some audit procedures. Over the first six months, there's certain things that we just can't record. For instance, related to PERA liability. Things of that nature, so there's some things that are always going to be annual, but you are right, Robert, that a number of those are. Just essentially a first six, the last six months.
Last six, this report is the last six months of two thousand and.
It's an annual report, so it covers the entire calendar year. But like, like I already mentioned, a number of those journal entries were related to activity or things that happened. From June or July one through December.
Because that makes a difference. You know, if you spread thirty-seven over twelve months or thirty-seven over six months.
I don't know if it's, it's, it would quite work quite that way, you know, but we do perform a number of adjustments during that, that mid-year compilation as well. So had we not done that, yes, that number would be a lot. I don't know if it would be double, but it certainly would, would have contained a, a significant difference. Okay, so let's move on here, slide number seven contains some recommendations. That, that we're providing to the council, I don't want to spend an awful lot of time on this, the second opinion because these. Elements are more clearly developed or completely addressed. And that management report, I would encourage the council to take a strong look at those. The only one, and I think really probably the most important one on slide seven, is the very bottom element. Under payroll processing, again, this is an area that's been a challenge for the city. We're recommending an update or a change to that process, the payroll process, and then. You know, a policy is great, but what you really are looking for and what you need is some type of oversight. So that's, I believe, the, the big element that we're missing here is some oversight to ensure that these policies are followed, to ensure that that process. Unfolds the way that you, that you expect it will.
How, how would a town our size remedy to that? Problem, I mean.
Oversight?
Yeah.
Well, the council, this is, this is where, you know, you are not management, you are governance, but you can certainly step into that role. And review that that process. All the elements of that process came forward.
But. What, what information would give us? At that time, the review, whether it was paid on time or not?
Well, there's, there's reports that can be pulled from your accounting software where you can look at those, those different things. There are on the bank statements, you can certainly look to see that the IRS has been paid. The state of Minnesota has been paid, those sorts of elements, PERA as well, but if it were, if it were me and you asked my advice, I would ask you to look at the payroll reports. For all payroll that's run that one, it tells you exactly what ought to be paid. When it is paid, there's always an acknowledgement or it's kind of like a receipt. That can be, that can be printed, and I would ask, that would be part of that process, is to print that receipt. That demonstrates that those payments were posted or at least initiated so that they can pay.
Aren't them taxes supposed to be paid by the twentieth of the following month of each quarter?
The twentieth is your sales tax, any sales taxes.
Being that we have such a small payroll. To the state and fed, we only pay it once a month, or is it once a quarter?
Once a month.
Once a month.
At least have to pay monthly. You can pay more frequently, you know, we have some cities that because of some of these situations say, hey, every time we run payroll, I'm going to make my payroll deposit.
So by.
So that it doesn't get missed.
By what date does a state and a federal have to be paid in for the city of Goodthunder, by when?
Fifteenth day of the month following and that payroll was, was run.
Good.
Yeah, it seems like. I think we've talked about that lag because we are talking, just say, for instance, we are talking the month of March. That had to be paid by the fifth, no. It gets divided in two, right, because it's the last half of one month, first half of the other ones to get paid, is that how that works?
It's the date of the check, so any checks that were dated during eighth, or excuse me, during March. Would be what you, you have to withhold those taxes.
Yeah.
And you have to deposit those taxes with the IRS and the state of Minnesota by the fifteenth day of the following month.
Okay.
And at the weekend, you get the next business day.
So March's payroll would be, got to be deposited by April fifteenth?
At the latest, yes.
Okay, anytime before that.
Yep.
They have fifteen days to get that figured out.
You may pay your all, you know, and that's actually would be a bad idea. You know, you go through that process, you run your checks, you do everything, and your tax deposits immediately. Okay, on to the next slide. We did note a few situations during the year, some of which are not internal control related. Or compliance with Minnesota statutes, I've listed those here, I don't want to go through all of that, it's one of the benefit of the council, the first four bullets you see there relate to payroll. Again, this is a, this is a situation that refers, that's why we're highly recommending that the city go ahead and. Change that process, provide some oversight to ensure that this does not continue. There were another handful of things that we noted, the last three bullets. Related to some adjustments that were made to utility billing accounts. Another one related to improvements or updates to your personnel manual. And then finally, we did find. At least two, I believe there were more invoices that were paid in Duplecare. One of which actually came through in January of twenty-twenty-three, it was paid a second time. That's a concerning issue and I, as I was preparing for the meeting, I was trying to come up with a, with a. With a recommendation on how to correct that, and I don't know if I've come up with a really good one. You know, I think, I think the best that I can do for you is to. As these invoices are paid, get a stamp. Stamp that invoice is paid, so that it doesn't get misplaced, doesn't come back around and end up getting paid a second time.
Those three or four that you found, does that add up to that amount you got on the bottom of that?
One of those, yes, one, I, I believe that which is one invoice that was refunded, the vendor obviously noted that the payment had already been made. And return that money back to the city. Okay, so that's essentially everything I wanted to go over, the legalese of your audit, let's say. From here forward, what we'll do is stabilize the financial condition of the city. So we're going to look back a couple of years, see where you were starting in twenty-eighteen, we'll create some trend lines. We'll evaluate where the city stands right now and hopefully that'll give us clues into where the city will be in the future. All right, so slide number ten. Slide number ten includes some, some highlights, so as I look at your financial statements, I review a number of these throughout the year. I try to pluck out a few items that I feel are. Are something to kind of hang your hat on, that are some very nice results that happened during the year. And the three bullets you see there, so the city's cash and investment balances increased by approximately $280,000 this year. Your reserves for all activities of the city saw increases. And then finally, your general fund has improved its fund balance by almost $500,000 over the past five years. Your general fund continues to do quite well. Your general fund continues to do quite well. Uh, so if you don't remember anything else that we talk about on your financial condition of the city, uh, these are three excellent highlights. Month. Alright, so moving over to slide number eleven, top of page six. What we see here, uh, is the city's cash and investment balances for the past five years. Alright, so, uh, we separate out your city into two broad categories. Governmental activities, which I'd like you guys to just think not only your general fund. Who's the fire department and some other activities there. Uh, but that's the bulk of what it is or what we relate to with governmental activities. Your business type activities is that water, sewer and refuse fund. Okay, uh, so we've got each year listed and that's kind of broken down. I know that slides a touch busy. Uh, but if we just look at trends, orange constitutes your investments, blue is your cash. If we look at trends and we focus in on your governmental activities, you've had some very steady. Uh, very consistent results. And quite honestly, that's what you want to see. You want to make sure that you don't have a lot of peaks and valleys if you're, you're in cash balances. Uh, and in doing so that you guys can have a better handle on, uh, any spending that you want to proceed with in the future. Alright, uh, your business type activities has had a little bit of variance from year to year. Uh, but again, overall, things are very steady and you're seeing some very consistent results again. Which should allow you to make some good spending decisions here moving forward. Um, if you guys recall back on slide number three, I believe I mentioned the city. At the end of the year had about one point six million dollars of cash and investments. That sounds like an awful lot. And it is. What if I were to tell you the city of Mankato is sitting on twenty million dollars or thirty million dollars? Sounds like an awful lot more, but how much is that? How much is one point six million dollars as it relates to the city of Good Thunder? Well, the table at the bottom of slide ten attempts to answer that question. And we call it days of reserves, right? So what you're seeing here. Uh, we've taken the city's year-end cash investment balances. You've divided it by your average annual expenditures. We multiply that by three hundred sixty five. And what that does is that converts those year-end balances. Now, how long could you operate? Under average annual conditions and we represent that as a number of days. We all know that there is very little that's average, uh, expenditures kind of come and go throughout the year. But it's a good measuring stick for the health. Of the city and it can also evaluate how you're doing versus your, uh, cities of similar size and structure. So if we look at that table, let's focus in on the year that represents twenty twenty two. Uh, for your governmental activities, that's your blue row there. Uh, six hundred and twenty-six days of past reserves at the end of the year. Uh, you do a little bit of math there and that's approximately twenty months. Not quite two years. As, as we look around southern Minnesota, cities of your size and structure, what we see in our firm. Most cities are in that twelve to fourteen month. Uh, so you guys are definitely exceeding what we would say is kind of your peer group or an evaluation on other cities. If you look at your business type activities, although you don't hold as much cash, you didn't have water, sewer and refuse fund, your reserves are actually higher. You have seven hundred and thirty-three days of cash reserves, which is. Basically two years. Twenty-four months worth of resources. So. The city. Is well positioned, your reserves are very, very healthy. Uh, looks as though you guys aren't going to have too much difficulty moving forward to continue to provide the services that your. Your residents and customers expect.
This year. Wasn't at that meeting, but did we go up zero or one percent?
I don't know. No, it was like five.
Oh, we ended up going to five? Really?
Yeah, four or five. I forget. How much was it at the end? I don't remember.
We, we increased our revenues two years old.
Cause we were talked about.
Going up. I went from to zero. I went through and I increased the budget. One percent.
Yeah.
And zero percent. I did not. We didn't look at the budget last year. We just raised it two percent or whatever. And so that number lagged behind the budget. And so when. We met that night, that's why I explained that this is not a zero raise budget or one percent budget. This is more like a. I remember the four percent or something. You can see that in your tax.
Yeah.
I have to obviously see it. That it went up, especially if you're a. Single family homeowner. See, they got hit the worst.
Because originally in one of them, the August meeting, we were talking about going up zero to one. And you know, that, then that would catch up with these reserves. If, you know, you would probably be spending some money out of your reserves. Versus putting it in there every year, every year like we have been. But this year we'll probably be even again then, or maybe. Be ahead of the ballgame a little bit.
Yeah.
With a four or five percent.
Yeah, yeah. And just to kind of dovetail on that, I think it is important to have a, you may look at that and say, you know, we've got an awful lot here, twenty months or twenty-four months. But if you think about how the city kind of evaluates or how you. Position yourselves financially, you don't have any debt. And. It, it appears to me that the council isn't really debt adverse, but you'd like to pay cash with, with. Or, or make these expenditures, make these, uh, infrastructure improvements with cash. To be able to do that, you need to have that cash available. You know, it's all those, hey, we've got a really good reserve. We want to keep that levy barely, you know, at a one or at a zero increase. Just remember that if, if that reserve does dip down and you need some significant improvements. You may have no other choice but to go and sell on. Or go do some other type of debt financing for that activity. So just keep that, keep that in mind as well. Okay, so over on to slide number twelve. Uh, slide twelve is a representation of the city's general fund, fund balance. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on here, bore you guys about fund balance, but. Uh, just know that fund balance is vitally important, especially as you evaluate the health of that general fund. But what I do want to, what I do want to state is that the table at the bottom of slide twelve. Um. So as we look at audit terms, as we look at fund balance. We get a, an idea of where we feel the city ought to be with your, with your fund balance. The state auditor has some recommendations as well. Uh, and then finally. Debt rating agencies, those that look at, uh. Look at financial statements that may end up purchasing a bond if the city were ever had to do that. They've got some ideas of where they'd like to see that general fund. As far as your reserves are concerned. Um, the state auditor says you should have approximately forty to fifty percent. Of your annual budget in reserve. Fund balance. I would argue that's not enough. I would say you should be sitting somewhere in that seventy-five percent range. And that's also, uh, what you see with a lot of the rating agencies that look at financial statements, purchase those bonds. So if we take that criteria, seventy-five percent of your annual operating budget. Uh, the city has exceeded that amount by approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Okay. Very, very good. But that money, uh, can only go so far. So again, keep that in the back of your mind as these projects come due, as you guys are making improvements. Uh, you're not going to have to probably issue a bond, but you're going to consume some of that, some of that fund balance. But just know that, uh, as it stands right here at first flush, it looks very, very good. Okay, over on to slide thirteen. This is the city's budgets that are for the general fund. A couple of comments on this. So what you're seeing here, uh, you've got a column for your budget. Middle column there is actual and then variance against that budget. If we look at your, that very top row. Uh, that blue highlighted section for revenues. Uh, you can see the city's budget. Actual and the variance, uh, this year the city. Uh, went over budget and your revenue is a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So I suppose if you're going to go over, that's kind of where you want to do it, you know, with the money that, that came in. Uh, as I evaluated that revenue budget. To look for why. Where was the significant variance? And there really wasn't one particular area over another. Uh, just about every one of those areas had a positive variance. So I would, I would encourage. Management, the council to take a strong look at that coming in the next budget season. And set some more appropriate budgets. If you know that your property taxes are going to be at a certain level, put your budget there. Uh, there's no, there's no real benefit to being conservative on that front, especially with revenues that you've got a pretty good sense for. Um, so it looks to me like that revenue budget could use some work to bring it up to a more, uh. A little bit more actual with what, what that expectation is. The next section below that, uh, that orange highlighted section expenditures. This is how that city spent the money that you received this year. Uh, your budget was set overall at six hundred and forty thousand. Actual came in at five hundred and seventy-one thousand, so you were under budget by approximately seventy thousand dollars. Okay, so that's, that's certainly a good thing. Um. Again, as I looked through the budget, there were a, a number of items that were. A little bit over, there was a number that were a little bit under, but overall you guys certainly set a certain priority and you came in underneath of that. Uh, that result resulted in a change in fund balance. We look at the bottom. Row, the double underline center column. It's a positive change in fund balance of twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So in my world, we're not allowed to say profit and loss. That's what that is. Your general fund had a profit. Of nearly twenty-one thousand dollars. Right? Moving over to slide fourteen. Uh, this slide here. Is going to focus in on your, uh. Your enterprise funds. Well, and you've heard me refer to it as business type funds earlier in this meeting. And there's a very, there's a very important reason why auditors and accountants refer to them as business type activities, simply because. There, there, there's an expectation that they operate like a business. Uh, profit is the motive there for that water sewer and refuse fund. You want to make sure that those, those funds can operate. Uh, autonomous from the rest of the activity of the city and to do that, you got to set through rates properly. But I would argue also that profit and loss maybe is not the best valuation for those utility funds. And simply because profit loss can mislead you. There's a number of items that auditors record your records. That has no impact on your ability to pay your expenses. Okay. Um, so I would say that a better way to evaluate those is to look at your cash balances. Alright, cash is never going to lie to you. You don't pay your bills with profit, you pay that with math. You look at the beginning of the year, where were my cash balances? Where are they at the end of the year? Up or down? That's not going to lie. If, if your cash balances are up, you likely had a better year than if those cash balances are down. Alright, so what you're seeing on this slide is an evaluation of your cash flow. That blue highlighted section there from operations, what that means. That essentially that is the purpose for each of those funds. Alright, so let's say the water fund for instance. The purpose that fund is there is to provide water to your residents. Alright, and to do that, you need to charge those residents a certain fee. You take those collections and you pay all your bills that it takes for you to deliver that water. Alright, whatever's left. When you receive that money from your customers and pay all your bills, whatever's left. It's called cash flow. Alright, and the idea is that you have a positive cash flow for each one of those activities. And as I look at this slide, you did for each set water sewer and refuse fund. Alright, you may ask, okay, Greg, why is that so important? Why are you harping on this? Well, it's important for a number of different reasons. First off, it increases that reserve that you have for your business type activities. Uh, but what it does is it allows free cash flow for you to make your infrastructure improvements. And over the years, you guys have lined some sewer pipes. That's very costly. Wouldn't be able to do that unless you had some cash flow. Uh, by operations, if you had debt service and a handful of years ago, you guys did in that sewer fund. You don't any longer, but if you ended up with some type of debt service upon. Uh, promise or you know, you name it, that free cash flow would be used to make those debts payments. Okay.
Didn't we make a motion back and a year or so ago to, we paid it out of the general? But then did we make a motion to? Have the sewer pay the general back? Did you remember seeing that?
Uh, well, there was a transfer from the general fund to the sewer fund in twenty-two. And I do recall, uh, over the last handful of years, there has been support provided to. The utility funds from your general fund, uh. There's, uh, at least a couple of different ones that were, that were made. I don't recall exactly the purpose for those. But I know it had to do something with some infrastructure improvements.
Well, that was mainly out here in this row and when we lined some of these. Uh, that Tony bill didn't get paid for six, eight months or whatever, and then we ended up. We paid it out of the general, but did we make a motion to? Pay that back out of the, um, sewer fund to? The city, the general?
Yeah, I don't recall, Robert.
I don't recall. I don't think so.
Well, we had to transfer money that time, right?
Yep, it went the other way.
Pardon?
It went the other way.
Yeah.
From the general to.
Yes, but then didn't we make a motion that, uh, the city, the sewer fund would owe the general fund ma- and make payments?
I don't think so.
I know we talked about that. That was one of the.
It wasn't a recommend.
So you can either pick a one-time transfer. Which, and we call that a permanent transfer, so that's just resources that you. You send over the, the sewer fund to help, help pay for some of these expenses. The other option was let's borrow it over there, you know, treat it as debt service and then have it returned and. Uh, as I, as I reviewed the meeting minutes, I looked at the resolutions that were posted. We didn't see any indication that there was any intention of. A loan between the general and sewer as far as repayment is concerned.
I know we talked about that too, that you know, whether we take it out of the general. Or we transfer it into there. It's thirty dollars.
Yes.
It's already money we have. And it can be like paid for. So do you think that's what probably we did?
I'm fairly certain it is.
And I think you, you say we need to have, be better at making motions and. And, uh. Following through on the resolutions and that, do you think we should be a lot better at that? For your sake to see.
You know, I guess it depends on the si- the situation that you're referring to. Obviously with a receipt of a donation, you need a resolution. You know, I, I think, you know, uh, others may be able to speak more clearly on this matter, but you know, we see with other cities, if there is something. You know, that has importance. Tax levy, your budget, those sorts of items, we normally see that with resolutions and there is, there's kind of a Goldilocks zone, I would imagine, uh. Where some cities are more active in motions, whereas others. You know, it's a resolution. I don't know if there's a hard and fast rule. I'll leave that to somebody else to, to answer that question, but. I can just basically state what I see with other, with other communities.
Yeah.
So as we look at this slide, uh, good discussion here. No, I can, I see your utility funds. Uh, seem to be quite healthy, Robert. Now, if you look at, so we, at the bottom of this slide. Um, we do show historical plus or minus increase or decrease in your cash, meaning that's in rent is a decrease, lack is a. In the positive. Uh, but if you look at twenty and twenty-one for the sewer fund, I believe that's kind of what we saw there was money came over from the general. That's why you had that. Large increase cash balance. However, that payment wasn't made until the subsequent fiscal year. And then obviously it offset itself and almost ended at zero over those two years. So as I would analyze that. Uh. Seems like your rates are okay. Again, like I said, there's no guarantees. Uh, that that's going to maintain and continue that way. So I would ask and encourage the council to always evaluate those utility rates, at least on an annual basis to ensure. That it's providing the, the amount of capital you need. For any future improvements or anything else that might be necessary for the city. Okay, slide fifteen. Uh. This is your audit team for the year. Me. Myself, Greg, I'm partner on the audit. My brother Paul works for me as a manager. Uh, Luke and Amanda have assisted on the audit over the past few years. Uh, I know some of you. Enjoy the audit presentation more than probably others. Um, circle it on your calendar or you, some, some councils get auditoritis when they hear I'm showing up, but. I'm joking. Uh, but I will say this, out of everything that I do related to the audit process, this is one of the things that I actually enjoy the most. Is coming out, talking to councils, trying to help you guys understand these financials. You know, this is all I do. Financials, well, I have an annual, my picture is on the wall, but. I spend an awful lot of time in my freshman career looking at these things. So if I. Am able to, or if I can provide any assistance to the council or anything that you may be. Uh, looking at or evaluating, if you need an unbiased, unharmed opinion, you certainly can reach out to me. My. Email and phone number is on that. Matter of fact, anyone on the audit team would be very happy to assist. Uh, with any questions that the council may have throughout. Our audit process or audit, um, assistance doesn't end after we present this. We're certainly there throughout the year for your place. And with that, that is everything that I, uh.
Alright, anybody with questions?
Not this time. I have not a question on the audit that you presented, but I have a question on our current financials here that we got and. There's a, in the fire department. Machinery and equipment, there's an eight, eighty-seven hundred dollar. Reduction. Existence in the expenses. Machinery and equipment actually. Instead of spending eighty-seven hundred dollars, it's credited eighty-seven hundred dollars. Would that be the sum of the double paying bill? Perhaps you got refunded it or.
Lot of them. Man, it was double. Yeah, I, I guess I don't know. Well, that's something you may.
Something we need to find out. Cause I don't see that amount anywhere else. I don't, you know, it doesn't show up anywhere else. Like it was moved to another account, so.
That was the only question I have.
Maybe you want to look at this, Greg, here. It says under this. Uh, cash balance summary. There is a two oh four G T housing red. Five twenty-one dash six one five. There is a two oh four GT housing red five twenty-one dash six one five, uh, twenty-eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And then it goes over to balance, no investment. Where do you think that money has come from or? Where does that? Where did that originate?
Talking the, the small city revolving?
No, the one right there, that twenty-eight hundred dollars, you know, that.
That was from, so that was in place, uh, when we came on board as your city auditor and that was a residual amount left over from some, some grants to provide housing rehabilitation, car rehabilitation. Very similar to the SEDP grant that you were involved with a few years back.
So that has to stay there on that line item and that just can't be moved down there to small cities revolving? It just has to stay there?
No, what you would need to do is find expenditures that would comply with those original grant provisions and you can spend that down.
Okay.
You could move it into the general fund, um, you know, take and, and do some street work with it. That's money that would have to be similar to the program. Continue to follow those provisions on that and the residual amount that you had from that original grant.
All right. Anybody else with questions? No. If not, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, Kelsey Gettler purchase of the school. That'd be you. Alrighty.
Everything else can basically be handled outside of this, but uh, the resolution, the big thing. Those handy dandy resolutions he was mentioning.
Thank you, Greg. Or just the resolution? Put a number on it?
So it's just whatever next number for resolution for the year.
You know what number this should be?
I mean, any of this year, so it'll be the first one. What you can do?
You have a lot of involvement in this. How far is this from changing hands then or?
Uh, all the way down to the addendum to the purchase agreement that I did this morning.
Okay. So when do you think it would all be ready to be signed?
It's now. The only thing that's actually public related would be the resolution that you're looking at right now. Which is just addressing that this, the city never had the intention to retain the school uh, or any use. So you're going to go ahead and purchase from Big River Schools and go ahead and sell. And there are three different entities that are buying certain percent of interest.
Long as we're still reading there, Kelsey. I mean, the, the Men Lake School, is that sold or not?
Uh, as far as I know, it, uh, it was canceled.
It was, okay, it was for sure totally canceled. So they're gonna tear it down, as I heard.
That's what I heard too.
Okay, you don't read it, okay. It's gonna go, their offer got withdrawn and gonna be torn down. And you know what? Don't miss the City of Good Thunder is the best thing school district did.
Most successful thing.
Yeah, because it's good for our town and uh, saves the school district what? Quarter of a million, half a million dollars from tearing it down.
Also helps our property taxes by not having that.
Yeah. It's a win for the city as soon as it's into Drummer's properties. Let her rip.
You mentioned that there's three people in, ha- have interests now. It's not.
Entities. Yes, that's the addendum to the purchase agreement there. So if you run on the bottom, that's what it's you're agreeing with yourself.
That's. I thought we were getting in, in partnership with Mr. Drummer.
Chris, do you have any uh, input on this? You know, there's what, four businesses there?
Kelsey, can Robert see the, uh, the three buyers? Is that a meaning, the one, the one that you, um, the percentages, is he okay to say that? See that?
Yeah, okay. I mean, it, that's all getting public.
Yeah, yeah.
Down Home Investments must be LLC owned by.
That AMP and F is him too.
As an investor as well, I'm not sure. Maybe have an opinion on that.
Well, eventually, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, well, for what he's done with it.
You want to see this one too?
The only concern that I have, and it's not a big concern, is it just talked about it being announced as the principal piece of business for the meeting. And obviously this is a regular council meeting, so it's not necessarily the principal piece of business. But overall, that really doesn't change too much on that. So it was, would be the one thing that I would, would change myself, but.
Can we just pen it in good?
Yeah.
Okay.
The wording is satisfactory, you think, the way it is?
Yeah, I think it's satisfactory the way it is with that correction. So if you put that in there, now just in the resolution that you're actually signing, you know, so you, you can have the documents signed, but you can pen and ink it on that. And then the record would show that was just a normal council meeting.
Any questions? So this would be all one of two.
Two oh four, uh, twenty twenty-three. So it's up to the month, oh four dash twenty-three.
With uh, the advice of Chris there, anybody want to make a motion to adopt this resolution? Oh four twenty-three?
So move.
For the sale of this real estate in the city of Good Thunder to these holding companies, right? Ron made a motion, someone second?
I'll second it with the uh, addendum or whatever that we, we're doing this at a regular council meeting. Not a special thing for this.
All right. Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both. Motion carried.
So this will actually close by?
This first bid date is tomorrow.
Okay.
Actual closing.
Would anybody have any, any words from here to go?
No, I'm gonna grab, uh, Robert and Ashley.
Who would sign on the bottom of this form here, Chris? Okay, both of us? Okay, all right.
What Gettler do you belong to?
I think you know.
Well, look familiar, but I'm just, I want to make sure. Yes, yes. Barb just went over to see Gail today too, so.
Should there be like two or three copies of this? So the city gets one of them or?
Yeah, you can either, uh, give to me and I will give fully executed packages to everyone after all of this, or you can take a copy now.
Maybe we should have one copy for now.
Or leaves or whatever.
Yeah, I think we should. Cause we burn a copy now, so we have it.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And already, moving on then, uh, that was one of my questions under unfinished business about Mike Drummer and the school purchase and all that. So I guess we can end that one. Uh, approval of the bills, questions on bills? Yeah, a lot of this is, uh, fire department here this, this month there. Why that dollar is so high probably, you know? Fire department had, um, hydro testing for eight hundred and fifty bucks and uh, training for seventy-five hundred dollars. So there's quite a little, you know, what's Keneva? Fire, Scott. That, that is, okay.
Annual testing would be certified every year.
Yeah.
But because of that eight thousand dollar correction or whatever happened there, it's actually six thousand dollars to the good. Go to the end. In there, and I'm on the, in the, in the fund.
Yeah. Okay, that's seven five hundred two. Once they're certified by the state, there's state funding that we get money back for that too, for the five that we're training right now. For that seventy-five hundred, we had to pay it upfront and when they pass the training and get certified, the state.
Does it all come back for a portion or what? Per person or?
Per person, you know, it's pretty much.
So you get it all back off all?
Pretty much of that, all the training, you know.
Any questions on the bills? If not, somebody make a motion to pass, make a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
Got made a motion to approve, someone second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Okay, um.
Then the uh, title, the, the amount of the title here for the school and that'll be paid back by the German organization, right? At closing.
Yeah.
Would you understand that?
He made it pretty clear that all the bills would come to him, right?
And they have, except for that one, I think. I don't think we've seen another bill except for this.
What bill are you referring to?
Platinum title.
Yeah, the sole, the original settlement statement that you see from the school is going to show all of your fees and show a total at the bottom line. But on the second settlement statement where you're selling to him, it's a dollar and I'm collecting and reimbursing up at your end. So no, I'm not taking anything from you.
Well, I, I just wanted to be sure we're getting re.
No, I think he understood.
Okay, uh, under, uh, new business here yet, I guess, uh, the compost site out here, full circle.
I think so. I think that's.
Full circle. Uh, everybody knows in City of Good Thunder that there's been certain days when the wind is out of the northeast. That is a very strong nasty smell. And I believe the city ought to write a letter to Blue Earth County stating our concerns on that compost site. I talked to Kevin Pap last week one day and he says they're, they're being monitored now for the next sixty days or that to come into compliance. What that compliance is, don't know. I mean, but have anybody smelt that? I mean, there's times that it's very, very.
Well, last coach, I mean, when you walked out here, it was terrible.
So I mean, do we draft a letter as a city dating our concerns with it? Cause we're what, by the crow flies what, not even three miles away?
Two and a half. Two point seven, I measured.
Well, they sell. I mean, I think it could be very concerning if they don't take this and uh, get it cleaned up. Uh, it's bad enough with them people in the immediate area have to put up with it, but why do people two and a half miles away have to put up with this smell? I mean, they either get it fixed or shut it down.
Would that letter go to the county commissioners then?
I would think so. Chris, how would we go about writing a legal, would you write that letter for us?
You can have me write the letter. It's probably more effective coming from the council and coming from you, but I would suggest it go to the county commissioners.
Yeah.
The Minnesota PCA, which is patrol agency in the county's office. You know, the PCA is gonna be the one that's eventually gonna have control over the, the compost site.
Do you have to send a letter, each, each uh, commissioner a letter just to Blue Earth County?
You can do the same way as the others. You guys sometimes will put, you know, Eric Anderson and council members. So you do the chair of the Blue County Commissioners and just the commissioners. I, I don't think it makes sense to send them each the identical letter.
Right.
But if you want to do something, you can take your commissioner and send that message to him. And write him something speci- specifically because he's there to represent the citizens. But I think to get really real action on it, want to go to the PCA's. Um, cause they're the ones that control it and, you know, if he gets the junkers office interested, they always have a bigger stick to build than anybody else.
Would they, or would it do any good to pass a resolution directing somehow saying? Uh, probably doesn't do, well.
You can do a resolution and that's not uncommon for cities to do that during election. Uh, last, I think, to have you go and like crystalated, you want supporting the bonding book. You know, it, it, it doesn't have any teeth, can't enforce anything. Um, but, but it, it does show council direction, but whether you do that or you do a letter that all you all sign, I think it works out as well.
Or to show more affirmative action as a council? That we did a resolution, you know, like you say, it don't have much teeth into it, but.
Yeah. I, I, I think that's six of one half dozen another. It's, it's a matter of what you think your preference is.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference. We should just send a letter, I think, then.
Who's gonna draft the letter? How, how do we want it worded? Do we, do we have Chris draft the letter, put legal terms in there and and more transferred on the city letterhead or what? How you, how would we do that?
You know, I, I suggest you, when you do a draft letter, because you're gonna get far more personal than I can regarding the compost site. I don't live in Good Thunder, so I'm not experiencing. If you want me to take a look at it and add some legalese or things on it, I try to think that would work. But I think if you're, you're lucky to try to pull off your heartstrings or be able to do that better than I. And, and sometimes in this, because when you're looking at it, you're not trying to force them to do something because they're legally required to do it. You're trying to get them to take action because it's the right thing.
Well, it's really an attempt to get Blue Earth County to take action on their own ordinances. I mean, that's really what it comes.
I, I think it is, but I think the answer to get back from Blue Earth County is they don't have any control over it.
They're gonna monitor for how many months, or thirty, sixty days?
Days, it's.
So basically, they just won't bring anything here, so they ain't gonna stink as.
Well, you know, if you're on the south side of it and the wind is behind you going that way, well, it don't smell, you know, because they're out of the cities and they might come with a little bit of shorted. Common sense, you know, I think somebody should go out there and direct them here, stand on this side. You know, because it's two and a half miles away, it gets very, very rude in town.
If you wanted to do a resolutions, the suggestion would be put it on the next council meeting, you know, put it up for a public hearing. Better take some comments and then you may be able to reference the public's comments in that letter.
I guess he didn't lose him. He didn't say, Kevin Pap didn't say how many days are into their sixty, you know? Are they three weeks into it? Are they ten days in? I don't know, you know?
But you can also invite the county, invite, you know, Mr. Path out here, or invite anybody on the commissioners out here, or some of the county works directors just to. Have them get, you know, get a feel for the problem.
Perhaps that he'd show off if we wanted him to.
Yeah, he would have been here tonight.
I would take him up on that, you know, if people, make sure that people understand this can be on the council agenda, you, you can get a hear it here.
Well, I think we should invite him for next month. Now to get the, the letter drafted from this council. Who's a good letter besides Tom? Writer besides Tom? They wouldn't like my language, so.
Inter導 later.
Alright, sounds good. So with that, do we need to motion then to, uh, Tom will draft a letter to the Blue Earth County?
And can, we can just wait till, well, we sent it, can't wait to make a motion, would that make more sense?
Do we want to wait a month, or do we wanna? Get it drafted and send it out, I mean.
Was it important enough, set a special meeting?
Well.
I think it should be done as quick as possible. The quicker they get that letter, the more they're gonna have time to think about it, the county.
Wait a month.
True, that's true. You get some warm, humid days here, the window the wrong direction. Not gonna be nice. So I mean, we could have a meeting next week or whatever.
It's better to just get it done and then let Kevin come. I think so, I mean. An update on it.
I mean, I'm hearing it from people I don't even know that, that smell, you know, I'm just, yep, I don't have a sense of smell, so I.
Well, it continues on west town, people out there smelling.
Oh, right, no, I know, yeah, yep.
Well, we still probably need a motion then to have Tom draft the letter as a county board. Someone, Ron made it some in a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Alrighty, anything else?
For visit or for what? On that one?
I guess, uh, we don't have any new business here, we, do we have some new business?
Well, I got, uh. Pearson, yeah, we're seal coating, got two bids and Pearson is. Little report out forty-five hundred dollars cheaper than the other company. And they've done it for us before, we've gotten a good work out of them, but I would suggest that we go with that. And they're all, you know, the same amount of square footage and everything and what it costs per square foot and stuff like that, so.
I agree.
All we can do.
I know who's doing the crack ceiling first.
Yeah, but we'll have to get somebody, uh, and WW, they do, do crack ceiling and. We don't know if the other company that we've had, is it business anymore yet, so we gotta call them first, if they can do it, that's good luck with them too. And, uh, we'll do that and.
Who are we gonna get to do the patching and repairs before this?
I'm gonna have WW come back out and, and we bet, you know, we worked with them last year and they did my way of thinking, they did excellent work. They know what they're doing.
We got some areas that seal coating is breaking up that might have to be milled out. Get a little back, back in there now, over this winter.
Yep. Oh, yeah, there's areas that are.
So there's a few things that need to be, but.
Yep.
Right now then, somebody want to make motion to accept this bid from Pearson Brothers for ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixteen cents? To quote all of our streets? I'd be every one of them except self holiday then, right?
This, the map of those.
Everyone that's blacktop.
Everyone that's blacktop, yeah. This is.
Oh, I am.
Holiday here, there. This is the county road right here, yep, so. Why is this? Well, that's down the other end there. Somebody want to make a motion then to accept this bid?
I would, just one comment, it says no, we'll start no earlier than May fifteenth, so they can't. Well, they won't start until after we're patching. Well, I, I guess maybe we should make, make, add that into the motion. Uh, they can't start and, I mean, we'll accept their bid, but they can't. Can't start until after the streets are repaired.
Yeah. Patching.
Yeah, we don't want to move into here May sixteenth. Yeah, yeah, but yeah, we can put that on it, that way it's done.
Did you make that a motion?
I will make that a motion.
Alright, someone a second?
I'll second.
John seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
And we, I got one bid for tearing down the house and we just got the report from the company that did the. Survey over there as far as asbestos and stuff, I think that was like Thursday at one, wasn't it something like that?
Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday. And, uh, our company hasn't put a bid in on it yet, and so that's in the air and. I'd got hope a tree service to come out, I mean, at least three trees taken down and, uh, get a price on that yet. And, uh, what else was there?
How about the lot ex- excavation, if, would we, would we lower that lot to fill, use that dirt to fill in the hole?
You know, so there wouldn't be as much of a hill there, cause even the, on, on the west side, there's a somewhat elevation. We just, you know, not making where the water runs down through the grass downhill, but a good, a good level lot.
But we have filled anything, I mean.
Yeah, we're not gonna be sure it's filled.
Have they submitted an RFP or scope of work for it, or you're, are you piecemealing them?
What's that?
Have they submitted an RFP or like the scope of work, like they're gonna tear down the house, they're gonna fill, they're gonna grade, they're gonna remove the trees, they're gonna fence and.
Trees are separate, yep. Tearing the house down and, and filling the foundation and leveling the lot.
But that's separate too, or that's not in on a bid, right?
No, I think that, nah.
We gave John a twenty-page RFP, scope of work, what we should be looking for, you know, from the tear down the asbestos disposal and everything. Um, and I brought it up at the last meeting, but it was, was kinda like, we already talked to a couple people, but John's kind of looked over it and.
I mean, the one, when, there's some windows, or that, that company that looked at, some windows gotta be taken out. And, uh, some.
Gawking around.
Gawking around windows, so the windows, whatever have to be gone, and the one contractor, he wants nothing inside. So all the appliances and everything go and.
They don't have to go anyway, but.
Right, but I mean.
But with the scope of work, should we actually cover ourselves with an RFP, just because it's, cause like, so. The existing water and sewer from the house to the street, should that be removed?
We shut it off at the.
But I mean, like the piping, cause they'll, it's eventually gonna become a water towers.
Well, or, or, well, okay, yeah, yeah.
Is it legal to cap the sewer right there where it is in the basement area now, or do you have to go back to the street cap it? Anybody know?
In Fraxis, it's generally done at the street area after cities capping it, you know, where it's a little unusual here, is you actually own the line. So you could do it there, but I don't, you know, I, I think it's gonna cause you more problems.
Would you dig it, would you dig it right back to the sidewalk where the curb stop is and end it right there?
You could, yeah, cause that way it's never gonna be in the way, whatever you put in there, you know? Yeah, I'd go back to the sidewalk and.
And besides, if it's an old one and it could be taking groundwater, you'd eliminate a lot. Because that should have been new on that project in behind the sidewalk.
Yep.
So you should have new from the center of the street, wherever the sewer is, to the property line.
Yep.
So probably the best interest of the city to seal that off.
Right, no, yeah, yeah. That would be extra, that's not in on the plan.
So again, shouldn't we have a scope of work, so everything's included in the plan, so we're not piecemealing it towards the end again? I'm asking, cause you keep ending up in the same situation, that's why I gave it to John to review.
Another bid.
Yeah.
Well, you can use the scope of work and you guys are talking about. Yeah, yeah, okay, it's no problem.
They're gonna remove the basement though too, right?
Yeah, you'd have the concrete, all the concrete's gone, yep. Yep.
Alright, so are you gonna check on that for the next thirty days in round?
Yeah, yeah, like I said, the tree service and, uh, what else and then? What else I had down here? What else was I supposed to do? And I know I did it, but anyway, we're taking care of the. Pardon me?
Did you look in the generator at the lagoons? You were gonna look in the.
No, we ain't gotten that part. And, uh, did you advertise that tank?
Yeah, it's back on our site and stuff.
Okay.
Yep.
Not in the paper or anything?
Uh, no, I can email it over to the messenger, I got a couple things going over to them anyways, so.
Like I say, no, no picture, just take, that's, it's best offer, yep.
And, oh, back to the house too, the appliances that are in there, is that something that Race can do to remove or?
Still got your cart? Yeah, he's got refrigerator cart. So I'd be better.
Cause I mean, if they're, if we're gonna have to get rid of them. We're either gonna have to salvage them, which costs, or I don't know if they're, if they have, if there's any useful life, I have no idea.
Alarm on the oven works real good, when I walked in, I'm going, what is it?
Oh, yeah, if he gets those out, then we can list those too, or just make an offer or whatever.
If they work, I mean, I think the refrigerator would, but as far as the washing machines and.
Well, and there was someone living in it before we took it.
Well, a water heater too, that I'm assuming too, yeah, and furnace, yep.
Can I take my furnace out?
City property. City property.
Really? You have a bill for it? I can produce a bill.
You're welcome to do whatever you think is best for you, I wouldn't advise.
Well, I get in trouble for that, so I guess we'll just forget about it. Um, alright, anything else, Senator?
You guys are welcome to do whatever you want, I don't really care. Um, Robert, here's the calls from the fire department and department.
That ain't on the agenda either, no.
No, I got those in.
Anything else then, Ron?
I think that's it.
Well, one thing, we probably should get some more fresh rock put on the lagoon.
That's, yep, yep, once that's all dried up.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna do that, we're, in fact, he's got calls into Walters to.
Good.
For, uh, recycled blacktop for one thing, we need it, as soon as he can get it and, uh. But once things dry up, we can get down there and cut the shoulders a little bit, so we can crown it.
Yeah.
So the water don't stay right for a row at all winter, so, yeah, that'll, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we'll get that done, but. Yep, and we might have to Peterson come in and blade it, we'll see.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if he can get it.
For sure.
Kinda soft on that northwest corner.
Yeah.
I think Ray said he was down there today too.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, we're working on it, yeah, he was on other roads too, yep. He was leaving the streets too.
Alright, I don't know where to put these. We got, uh, fire department, we had five calls total, four medical, one fire alarm. Uh, April sixteenth is, uh, Good Thunder Fire Department Pancake Breakfast fundraiser, nine to one. Any questions on that? Alright, uh, we have the sheriff's report here, total for March, sixty-two calls. Alarms, suspicious vehicles, suspicious person, assault, disturbance, this and civil. Any questions on the sheriff's department? We seen him enough?
I seen him.
Yeah, I do too, I guess so. Alright, um, we'll move on to community comment. Anybody with community comment?
Thanks for doing something about the batches order.
Pardon?
Thanks for doing something about the order.
Well, we'll send a letter, I don't know if it'll do anything, but I mean, it's a start. I mean, we are the closest city to it. And, uh, we just gotta take some action for our citizens that live here. And I guess I don't stop that each one can send a letter, citizens can send a letter also.
Sure, definitely, yeah.
Show the concern to the county board, you know, because you're all living here and I mean.
Well, we were here first.
Yeah, we were.
This was built after we were here, so it's not like somebody complaining about building a house next to an airport that's been at the. Deons, or the hog park. We were here, they built that, was supposed to be in compliance and everything, and obviously, there's an issue, so.
Well, not only that, but you could also spell over the period of time since they first originated, opening that place, they changed. The materials that they've been accepting dramatically, I mean, just within the last.
Three months.
Years, almost two years now. Um, it's just been, each year, it seems like it just keeps getting worse and worse, and the smell's getting more and more not. It really isn't so much with the predominant winds anymore, it's going way beyond that.
And the gal that was living just across the field to the east, who did a presentation with another gal. And it was so, it's a lot of information you could put in your letter. They're not allowed to put it within fifteen miles of a human being in Canada, Europe does. Typically can't happen at all, and they passed it, shit, they had all controls up there and then passed it anyway. So I'd love to get my hands on that report.
Alright, anybody else under community comment?
I just highly suggest that they rent a car to remove the appliances, we can't use your stuff anymore. So I just recommend, you know, that guy could put to kibosh, you know, people with good hearts. Get wrecked, so I just highly suggest renting one from A to Z or something, cause we're not going down that road.
Alright, thank you, anybody?
Talk about that, then you better get a licensed plumber electrician to remove any appliances, it becomes so that way, somebody might get sued.
We have to have it professionally renewed, removed?
You wouldn't think so, but that's where we live in.
I guess, you know, we're gonna have to contact the gas company and they're probably gonna have to cap that at the end of the sidewalk also.
Yep.
You know, cause that is running over there to the house, so I guess I can get ahold of them and have them capped at any time, it's a house is going away, right? So.
Is that in your report thing that you have?
What?
The report, John asked.
No, that, there's still, there needs to be additions to this yet too, cause it didn't have anything about sewer and water, I didn't think about gas.
Okay.
Power too.
The power is.
Power too.
Well, I, I, like, but I'm assuming that's a called.
Okay, yeah.
Cause they'll have to remove the line.
You gotta do it right, cause that one person, family will find something, so.
Okay, don't, we still have insurance to cover that, the Good Samaritan Insurance on our. City policy that covers somebody that does something by the kindness of their heart, isn't that still there?
Volunteer insurance, I believe it was, over there, right?
Yes.
Yeah. But it's not as clear cut as what we, as it used to be. So.
Chris, would you like to address that again, the, the volunteer insurance status?
Well, basically, we do have insurance that's a place for a league that if somebody's doing volunteer for city activity. And, and they have negligence or something, that nature of those companies, saving or for lawsuits, that would be against it. You know, in regards to removing youth, uh, appliances up on them, that would necessarily lie there or not, but. I don't think anything really stops you from just making that excess property and, and seeing if everybody wants to come in and take them.
Okay.
So there's other ways that we can do that, never get rid of it, having a negligence waiver or having, just matter what you end up wanting to do overall. Typically, when we, you know, build cities, tear down buildings, we just make that part of the request, almost anybody who ever stay. Then they have to comply.
Well, I think at this point, we better make sure it is all done correctly.
Yeah.
So I guess if it takes a month or two to make sure everything is, thing is done correctly, to take that house down, it's gonna take a month or two.
Did you listen? Yeah. Okay with you. Yeah, okay.
Question, Robert. As Steve mentioned about the negligent labor, would that also be beneficial to the city and other venues? And activities within the community of adopting a negligent waiver and have people sign it whenever they're donating. Uh, their time or, or equipment or whatever the case may be. I have no problem, so if somebody's donating their time or equipment, that's putting together a negligence waiver.
We have to have a, like a.
It would be a lot, I guess it'd be a lot, we've been in a lot of a form on that end. But I mean, paper is always gonna be more protective for the city than the highway. Cause in reality, you could have uh, storm damage or you could have. Be limbs stuff laying down in the ball diamond. You get volunteers to go down there, cut off those, those tree limbs and stuff like that. Just have the nuts, just a waiver, have them sign it. Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be an absolute, it's a lot more than not having anything.
Yeah. Cause we had a big wind go through here a few years ago, you know, and there was a lot of damage in the park and picked up a lot of that.
Even with assistance with mowing and things like that too, either. There's, there's a popular area that you could utilize that if needed, but it's better to have it than not to have it.
Yeah. Good idea. We'll get it some kind of form and.
Is that something you can draft?
Yeah.
Fire department should have be. Find that if we get called out to damage, we'd be covered.
The whole set of statutes that covers the fire department is gonna be completely correct. Same with the police department or an ambulance service.
But it wasn't a problem for years until October, so.
So like, two times in the last thirty days, the electricity has went out, Tom was there and I was assisting too. Being that we're on the council, do we have to sign that? I mean, it's a two man job, dude. Get the tractor down there and get it plugged in. We're gonna get a permanent generator down there. Which will eliminate that, but we did it two times in thirty days, I believe it was.
I think so. A lot of the stuff is how much you wanna go forward, but if you wanna ask your insurance carrier, they'd like to see a negligence waiver now. You know.
So an emergency situation like that. If you wanna have a sign, form signed by the council or say, boy, who helped one other time? Did Mitch help you? His son helped one time a year ago.
Yeah, maybe the council members helping is gonna be something completely different than other volunteers coming in. And your insurance policy covers you differently, um, your actions, so you're gonna be covered by statute differently, but. You know, uh, if they're, you're a small town, and there's gonna be times where it's not gonna be practical, you know, but having something in place. Having a negligence waivers, you know, not something that's already detrimental to the city.
I'm kind of here too, but here, so that means anytime the trees fall, we have to go sign a paper before we can pick them up. I'm really not hearing what's going on. Is that what you're saying?
That, that's not what I'm saying, no.
Oh, okay, so.
I, I'm saying that if the city has a negligence waiver, it's not a bad thing to put in place. I don't know that's practical for it to be done every single time you have an emergency situation.
All right.
Well, the part you can get raised to finish cleaning up the rock and put the borders back together that were, you know, not finished last year when that project got done hastily.
Well, the whole thing needs to be raped. I think we do have a lawn sweeper in the city shop yet, I believe. I don't know if it's uh, usable or not, but yes, uh, the people that got sixty-two or three hundred dollars, whatever that check was wrote out for, did not. Complete their service, so I guess we'll have to have our own employee fix that up and get that done, yes.
I noticed you were talking about hauling rock, since I paid quite a bit of tax in this town, can I put a bid in on that? We were told that was okay. I know the mayor won't want any part of it, but I just think I should have a chance of doing that.
That's a question for that guy because we're under the same name.
Yeah, but he said.
Not going there.
Bits, said he could put out for bits. He said that was all right.
If the city puts it out for bits, it could be okay.
Even with my name there, because I ain't going to jail again.
No, no, I understand that. I just need to look at that. We have the bits are going out, so I think we can certainly do in a fashion that, you know, you're putting it out there for everybody. You know, and it's, it's gonna be fine. I mean, I, I, you know. If, if I'm being put on the spot, I'd still wanna go back and take a look at the statute, but I don't see a problem right now.
Okay, so may make a note.
Well, it only seems fair, don't it? Doesn't it work your own town?
Can you spread it real thin? Thin?
I can guarantee it, I'll stand. I know a few spots and he pulled low and backed the mayor, donated his own personal rock to that. I hope we don't get in trouble for that.
All right, anybody else under community comment?
Where are we on getting the policies going?
And what night works the best for the people that are here?
Cause you got three of us here.
Yeah. Thursday night this week, Tuesday night next week, Thursday night next week.
Wednesday night next week.
Uh, Wednesdays are tough for me.
Thursday night this week?
Okay, Thursday night this week. Okay, meet up here. Seven, is that too late? Would you rather do it earlier?
Want to make that motion that, uh, what would we be calling this, an advisory committee?
Advisory committee.
Okay, so may I make a mention that the advisory committee will be meeting this Thursday night at seven PM?
And then from that point on, we'll set meetings, you know, they'll be.
Right.
More regular. Yeah, yeah.
I don't think you have to post them, do you?
Yeah, post them.
You do, but to be closed, I would.
It's not close, no.
Not closed meeting.
So anybody or brother can come in?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, that's all I'm asking, so that's fine. Okay.
All right, yep. Do I make a motion? Don't move. Someone second?
I'll second.
John, Ron made it, John seconded, on favor, say aye. Aye, pose, motion carried.
Would you have to make a motion then for bids for?
I'm not coming.
I guess depends on what you're gonna use it for. If you're gonna stockpile it, that's one thing. If you're gonna. I don't know, I mean, I'm. Some, we're gonna need spread. If we're gonna do the lagoon down there, it's gonna have to be spread on there. You won't be able to make the corner down there.
I mean, it could be, you know, place appropriate.
But anyway, it just uh.
An hour or two ago.
It's really totaled me out. Do you or us, I mean, we could, we could.
I don't care, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, request bids for.
So many yards.
Yes, bigger, five thousand tons of crushed rock, whatever you want, you know, class five or whatever. Uh, half, I mean. Spread and then so much not spread.
Yeah, so. Cause this is all for.
I remember, right, Kennedy said at a meeting that if you get two bids. And ask for it in the spring of the year, it can be for the whole year.
That's what I'm saying, exactly.
Yeah, that's a simple way.
That's what.
I have no input on this, you, I mean, you guys can make. The thing is, we don't wanna have two thousand tons piled up someplace.
No, it's gonna have to be loaded in a timer, a couple loads at a time and, no, it wouldn't be all at one time, no way.
Is this something that's kind of sensitive, or can you ask your streets employee to give recommendations, what's appropriate?
Well, I mean, like I say, we'll maybe need, need forty ton at one time. And three weeks later, might need more. But now, we're, we're getting recycled blacktop, so. We already, Walters is already gonna go get that. I don't even know where he gets it.
Yeah, he's the only one that's got the all that for that.
Yeah.
I, I'm just saying typically, when council gets something like this, we're getting a recommendation from staff as to what's needed.
Yeah, we look at what's, what's out there and, yep, yep.
But Ron has more ten times, hundred times more experience than the staff, because he just started.
Oh, no, 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 if he, if he knows what, what is necessary, I'd say no opinion.
But I mean, it'll be loads at a time, you know, might even be one load at a time.
What I'd be interested in is the way we've done it for the last forty years, is dumping in the pile, you know, that kind of thing, and then the city guy takes and puts it where he needs to.
Yeah.
And so I'm interested in is the same.
No, I say stockpile and that's one thing, you know, but. Like at the lagoon, that'll be spread, you know, and so. Whatever, I mean, we'll, we'll look into it, yeah, no problem. Yep.
How much we think you need in a pile?
Well, right now, we're kinda sitting okay in a way. We could probably, how many ton you, you, or have on? I'd have to look.
But first you'd have to have the bids in place, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's what I'm saying, though, you have to identify how much you want.
Yeah, well, I mean, you just have to put on, I can't say none, but you'd have to have an ongoing thing of say, uh, three hundred ton a year or something, right? And it could be more some years and less some years. When we did Hiller, a Hiller Drive, there was quite a little one out there during the county project because of the road getting hammered out.
I don't think you can hardly put an amount on it, just be.
No, it had to be as needed.
Per load as needed, this is one year you might buy five loads, the next year you might buy ten.
Right.
It's never gonna be a con.
So you guys wanna put out for bids then?
Well, you're gonna develop a bid? Hmm? You're gonna develop a bid? Well, I just have to call who's been hauling and. Jason, would he, would he, he'll haul it by the ton and.
Okay.
At work, doesn't need a couple quotes?
Just to get a couple quotes.
Okay.
And it's like, you know, per unit basis, you're right. If you're taking it on a certain amount of damage, you can. In a building that per unit basis, you can go within twenty-five percent of that market, it's really saying. You don't know how much we need this year, what would you be able to put this out? So it's equal for everybody, that's fine.
Like I said, we don't know, I mean, it, it varies all the time. I mean, if we, depending on the rain or whatever, you know, and uh. So uh, and we could stockpile a couple loads, you might not need me for another month and a half.
Yeah, and so if you've been it on a per unit basis, that should be fine.
I think that's kind of the way to go. You know.
Need a motion then to accept stick bids for rock line to the city of Good Thunder as needed? That how you wanna state it?
Yeah.
Somebody wanna make that a motion for him?
Someone.
Someone to second? Own favors, say aye.
Aye.
I will abstain from that. All right, motion carried. Anything else then under community comment?
Any bites on a new lawyer?
Yeah, we're gonna get the RPL, should be out hopefully Monday. Some of that was on me, so. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, it's ready. We just need to get it published.
Any ideas on how to remedy all those problems that keep happening that daughter keeps bringing us? All the mistakes keep getting made.
That.
Remedy for that.
Short answer, I need more time to look for on that, and I wanna see the detailed report, because this, all I've seen so far was what he gave us tonight is the summary, so.
All right, nobody else?
Um, do we know what we're gonna do with South Holiday? I know they brought some gravel out there, but are you guys gonna do anything with that road at all, ever?
We are waiting for the recycled blacktop. It's quite, not quite the season for that. We don't wanna put crushed rock on the recycled blacktop. Because it keeps the dust down. I know you have black dust instead of brown dust, but it's still better than limestone, so. I talked to Tom Walters a week and a half ago, he said that pit was still not open. But he was hoping it would open up now when the weather warms up, so.
Are we gonna do anything to like, hard it?
Well, we had the engineer out here, what, a week, a couple weeks ago. There is a water main in there that we haven't decided whether we replace yet. What, where did we leave him with that?
Yeah, they're supposed to come back. Report land.
Yeah, some options. Do we gotta loop it and all that stuff, so?
Yeah, but we don't really wanna take and blacktop it and, because is you, do you think your water pressure is low there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, see? Yep.
He said the required. State mandate is to have a six hundred, or six inch main there. Right now, it's what, four?
Four. And so see, there's, chances are, it should be updated. And uh, you know, could that happen that this year? Taking bids and replacing water main, hopefully. Could be, you know, towards the end, but we are gonna fix the holes, get it, yeah, I drove down it the other day and it's like, it's terrible.
Been better, because they have some.
Yeah, they put.
But he had leftover.
We had some leftover, yeah.
And it was better.
Yeah, no, it's not perfect.
No, it's not, but at least I don't.
I drive that road too.
We are gonna have the guy, as soon as he can get that, get a couple good loads up there and get it leveled out and hopefully. Pack it together again, sort of, sort of, until we can make up our mind on the water main.
Be a new sewer line, two or just water?
Well, the main can be.
You can buy in the sewer, please.
You know, you do.
Or you can.
Yep. Because I don't believe, all the years I've been here, Ron, I don't think it's ever broken a water main going that way.
Nope.
We had the one on in front of Tom's house, so that broke the water main four times, five times in three years.
In the winter time all the time.
That's, that's what's happening.
Good equipment.
So be patient, we'll get the holes fixed and uh, you, you'll have to live with that all this summer, so.
As long as you don't, I mean, as long as it's drivable.
Yeah.
No, it'll get back with more material on there and leveled off and packed and, yep.
This winter's buying cars on all roads everywhere.
Yeah, all of a, electric waves and everything, got a lot of potholes here this year, so. Uh, Race has been busy trying to get, get them smoothed out and filled in and everything else, so. All right.
Morin's got her hand raised.
Pardon?
Morin.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I forgot all about that screen there, Morin?
Yeah, um, just a question, do you, is there a certain time of year that, um. You take requests for putting down oil on the gravel roads? Um, I'm just, I know that the city, I believe, did it last year on, on Hiller and over on uh. Next to um, going down by our farm. Is there a list or a date or something that we have to be on a list to get that done?
Soon as the roads are in shape, we'll take care of that.
Excellent.
It could be a month, you know, or whatever, depending on the weather.
I just wasn't sure if we had to get on a list or, or request it, so that's great, thank you.
All right, anyone else? How can you have an anonymous up there? Don't they have to have a?
I put that on the streets, so.
If not, no one else, we'll move on then to, uh, I got some new business here, uh. Let Nelson has for many years put flowers on Main Street and uh, with the help of Vicky now lately and uh. She was requesting around two hundred fifty dollars for flowers and dirt and pots or whatever. Is that a doable thing with the city?
Desmond, right?
Yeah.
Make motion to approve it.
Promotion.
Yeah, it looks, it's, it looks nice.
She didn't use it all last year.
But.
But we're putting more pots up there and it's okay. And so we, I don't know what she gets the flowers.
All right.
About the dirt and all the pots, so.
Yeah.
Your name, you can buy the dirt.
Somebody wanna make motion then for two hundred and fifty? Is that enough?
Yeah, that's fine.
So move, yep.
Someone second? Own favor, say aye. Pose, motion carried. Um, I guess this is kind of under new business. If we got an individual here that would try to promote and build some new houses in Good Thunder, out on Hiller Drive. Does the individual or the people have the backing of the city of Good Thunder?
But define backing.
Well. Would you say yes to that kind of project?
Depends on who's putting in the utilities and.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of things there to be answered. But I mean, if you, you got an ambitious individual that wants to do that. Would the city, you know, would we accept that challenge and put in water and soup?
All these other housing developments we've had, they, that's been paid for by the contractor. When they sold the lots, that was all included in the lots. All those places up there were that way.
Yeah.
You're up by you and.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's only where I'm coming from, I mean, they're just, um, you're talking money.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, what, what does water main cost here? Couple hundred thousand? Couple hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, you start circling that out there, you're talking.
Yeah, it is.
Big bucks, but I know what you're saying, I mean, it's housing, it's more taxes again and stuff, and.
We can sit here and have the same amount of hosing that we've had for X amount of years, or we can help promote our town.
And again, uh, them are all questions that would have to be answered, he just wanted to know if the city would be interested, if an individual would.
I said, we'd have to talk about the infrastructure, or that infrastructure, the water and sewer and.
Yep.
And uh, that's something that, I mean, that could.
Well, you tell, we're interested, but we gotta know more.
Yeah, I mean.
Have them come in and explain to them, they're responsible for.
I mean, with the interest going up right now, is is the housing market hot, or is that gonna be going down? So I mean, you know, this isn't something you could have to jump into, you know, maybe a guy can say, yeah, but with interest. Where it is now, is there any interest?
As Robert's alluding to, it's probably not in the worst city's interest to. Look into and see exactly what it would take to bring water and sewer there, just to have an estimate, not to get right down the nitty gritty. Cause playing simple, you can't have a developer come in and put one house in. And you put the whole infrastructure of everything in there for thirty houses, and it sits empty for another twenty, thirty years.
Right, yeah.
And now, you know, so, I mean, there's gotta be some type of a trade off there. Wants to come in, they're gonna have to make it worth the city's investment to go ahead and spend that extra money to put water and sewer in there. With a guarantee of, say, fifteen houses or whatever it could be, but with that said. You still have to have some type of a general formula of roughly what is gonna cost per lot.
Yeah.
At today's prices. So when you do have a contractor that comes in and says, hey, I want to build one house, you can automatically go right back to and say, it ain't gonna happen, this is what it's gonna cost us. Or if you had another contractor come and say, hey, I want to build ten houses with a speculation of maybe even fifteen more, if the lots can, there's not lots there for. You can come back and say, well, now it's piqued our interest that it's gonna be worth our while, go back and reinvest. Investigate into that and see if it's gonna be, who was actually take.
Yeah.
You gotta have a plan.
Yeah.
If they come off Hiller Drive, that'll be updated then too.
Well, you wouldn't want them all coming off uh Hiller Drive, you'd probably want to have a little. A road, its own road on the south side or in the north side of Hiller Drive, you know, because you wouldn't want all them driveways out in Hiller Drive. So then you got a street, you got water and sewer. You know, the individual talked about making a loop and coming back, and I said, well, up in that area, I wouldn't want a north facing house. For the winter this winter, a winter like this year, you'd every morning you'd have four feet of snow in front of your garage door. So. It's just an idea that the individual had, and you know, wants to know. Worked out some details if the city would ever encourage in involvement in it.
Well, I think that the answer really is, is that we may not want to be partners, but we'd we'd be excited to hear the plan and. Or order some sort of resolution, you know, we may not want to be partners in it.
No, as we've.
So.
Would the, would the city ever put the infrastructure in, and then that cost come onto that lot, like up there and then? Cult to set, that's how that was done, right?
That's how that was done, it was paid back.
Yeah, and that paid back, because lots in Mankato, I guess, are fifty thousand dollars at least.
You know, probably.
And he said these lots out here, you know, by the time you figure the water and sewer and you get ten, twelve, whatever. You know, you could get, maybe get them lots for fifteen. Maybe a little bit more.
You're talking in like this area?
Be right here.
Yeah, from all from here out to.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just wanting to know if the ci- city would have some interest, you know, and. I guess a yes or a no.
Well, yes. Have to be planted anyways, so you could tell them to get a pre.
Yeah, that'd be.
An idea drawn up for you.
I think. Yeah, you'd have to come up with a plan, so we could sit down and look at it. And how many feet we'd be doing this and that with the water and sewer and.
Well, we are.
Road if we need it and all that stuff.
We already know, we'd have to have a lift pump, right? Because the sewer would never be deep enough to go farther west than. Conley's house or Maureen's house, right?
I don't, well, I'm not, I'm not sure how that deep that is anymore.
Well, anyway.
But uh.
We'll just leave it at that for there.
We'd have to have more information, what he's talking and.
All right.
Where and, if you're putting in a road, you have to put in curb and gutter.
Well.
So I'm, it's gonna cost, there you go getting around it, it doesn't like to putting them up the last top there at that time. I mean, it's, we know what the sewer, or the water costs, and the sewer is probably not any cheaper than the water.
Right.
You know, yep. No.
Alrighty, anybody else with new business?
Um, L J P set uh June seventeenth for the city white cleanups this year. And it will be down at the ball field, they will not be in curbside.
What date?
Uh, June seventeenth. He said maybe in the future they can look at curbside, they just don't have the the manpower.
At the ball field?
Yep.
I'm gonna throw all that in. That on Saturday then? All what hours?
He didn't tell me hours, um, he was gonna stop out, I think sometime this week, and then he'll have pricing for um. Appliances and stuff too.
So do we have an individual down there to make sure that there isn't outside? City limits or did we man that at all last time?
Yeah, Jake, Jake was telling yourself.
That's what I thought, yeah.
He wasn't down there full time, but he was telling yourself.
Is that something we would do again?
Always got a, probably, yep.
And he knows everybody, this guy does it.
Yeah, that's a problem, uh, Race doesn't know. Well, I don't know a lot of people in town anymore either.
I know, it's whoever you put on there is, it's really just having somebody there.
Yeah, all right.
Other towns, you gotta have both. On your license or whatever, prove that to yourself.
Yeah. Yeah, you do that, yeah, what heck, that's, yeah. Yep. We get a lot of brush from out of town. Do you have brush pile, so, yep.
All right, anything else? Anything under unfinished business? Anybody? If uh, if not, then uh, somebody make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I think we need a, uh, we want to go into a closed personnel meeting. Tonight, tonight, okay, following this, okay.
So, right after this?
Right after.
All right.
All right, welcome to adjourn this meeting.
All right, I'm gonna, Ron made it, someone second?
Second.
Own favors, John seconded, on favor, say aye. Carried, thanks, everybody.
Yep.